Good evening, the council meeting of September 6th will come to order. If you'd please turn off our silence all electronic devices and if we could all stand on our guide and country. Father God, we open this meeting with Thanksgiving for the huge hedge of protection you provided our state and our community this week. Thank you. Guide and guard our proceedings in this business meeting of the city. May our words and our actions be for the betterment of our fellow citizens and the businesses of our community. Amen. Hand to heart, let us pledge our flag together.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, equal to the equal justice of our own.
Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, there are forms available in the back of the room that can then be turned into the clerk to your right. And if Fire Chief Kemp and Michelle Sterling from Safer Kids Greater Tampa would please approach the podium.
Good evening. This evening we present a proclamation of the City of Temple Terrace for Child Passenger Safety Awareness Month. Whereas Safe Kids Worldwide is a national network of over 600 coalitions and chapters that network every day to help parents and caregivers prevent unnecessary childhood injuries and fatalities. And whereas Safe Kids Coalition joins with firefighters, first responders, medical professionals, children's hospitals, pediatricians, police officers, and other committed citizens in the cause of child heat stroke prevention. And whereas, according to the kidsincars.org, over 900 children have died in hot cars nationwide since 1990 as a result of being left in vehicles, making heat stroke the leading cause of non-crash vehicle related deaths for children. And every 10 days across the United States, a child dies from being left in a hot car. It only takes a few minutes for a car to heat up and become deadly to a child inside. And whereas, in 2018, 53 children left in vehicles died from heat stroke. Florida leads the country with four incidents of children in vehicles dying of heat stroke in 2019 thus far. It is vitally important that parents and caregivers never leave a child alone in a car. And if a person sees a child alone in a car, that he or she should call 911 immediately. Now therefore, I'm Mal Horado by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Child Passenger Safety Awareness Month. Chief, Michelle, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I appreciate you proclaiming this for us for the month of September. We appreciate and we're thankful for the partnership that we have gained with the City of Temple Terrace Fire Department and with the City of Temple Terrace itself. In 2018, there were 51 hot car deaths. So far this year, in 2019, we've had 40 as of yesterday in the nation. So it's very important that we make everyone in our community aware of the important issue that we have going on here with hot car deaths.
I just wanted to thank you and your entire team for partnership, for the partnership that we have. And also, on Monday at 11 o'clock, we're going to have a demonstration, a hot car demonstration at the fire station where we're going to put a temperature gauge on the outside and an inside of the car with a simulated baby in a carriage and car seat and show you how quick, you'd be surprised how quick the temperature rises inside the car. So we're going to, we're going to have that demonstration at 11 o'clock. And the main reason to show and disseminate awareness to everybody in the community and throughout that's watching on how imperative it is and how important it is and how quickly you can shut your door and walk out and it only takes a matter of minutes. And it's a devastating effect, obviously. So we appreciate you and your team and we appreciate the recognition today.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Michelle. Don't go anywhere. Counsel, if the minutes of the August 20, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Are there any corrections? All in favor, please indicate with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. If the minutes of the July 23rd special city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the July 23rd meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any corrections, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda, a three-minute time limit will be imposed for all comments from the public. As speakers approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city managers and directors in attendance do make note of these items that are related to city business and will be followed up on. First this evening, Jan Tumbleson.
Mayor, counsel, how are you all doing? Okay. I'm here to talk about 108 Holland Avenue. The house has been demolished. I want to thank code enforcement. I want to thank the building department. I want to thank the city manager for doing everything that helped the neighborhood. You know, it really is nice for it to be gone. And I really appreciate Tom's, Amir's, Ashley, who has now left the city, and Crystal. Because they had to put up with my numerous phone calls to find out the status. And of course, every time I went by at times, I made a phone call. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tumbleson. Gary White?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I think the last time I talked with you all was in June and we were talking about the point of sale and vaping and tobacco products and things of that nature. I think most of you probably have already heard about the Hillsborough County Commissioners discussing some possible strategies, how they can respond to this. I did send around a handout, and I will refer to this for a good bit of my time. One of the things that we talked about last time was about actions that we could take or should consider, about point of sale, vaping, how can we help try to curb some of the public health impact. When you look at this form, what I'd like you to do is look from left to right, and basically it's just broken down into three sections. The one on the left in the red is absolutely, we could do absolutely nothing and just let things kind of ride out with the vaping impact on our youth and our community. The middle section talks about we're moving in the right direction with some of these strategies. However, to the far right, we can have a better discussion. So let me just go over some of that for you. In the right direction would be something like raising the legal age limit. That's what Hillsborough County is considering right now. I did not see in the article in the paper that they might be considering anything other than raising the age limit. But I think for a more comprehensive discussion, certainly we should consider some of these and the rest of ones that you see here. On the far right, you see where Alachua County, and I did pass on to you their ordinance in full. What Alachua County did was they required a license for the tobacco retailer along with the age restrictions and some other things. So one of the things I just, my whole point of coming here tonight was, one, to share with you about, if possible, as you talk with other leaders throughout the community, encourage them to have a very robust conversation, not just about the age restriction. That's to step in the right direction, but I think we probably could serve our youth a little bit more comprehensively. The last thing I'll leave with you, and I'll leave with the, for you to read later, is this Florida Local Retail Tobacco Licensing Ordinance. In this public health law center document, it's evidence-based, there's some research in here, but they use Alachua County in the state of Florida as a model policy. One of the major things that is in this policy is Alachua County didn't just do the age, but they also did licensure. And so it's very comprehensive, even allows for tobacco use even if it's a part of your religious or cultural value. It allows for some of this. So I encourage the, you all at the review with the attorney about having discussions when you talk about this.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item 6A, a municipal code enforcement board chair, Richard Schmidt, will present the case for the lien reduction petition for 311 Live Oak Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members and staff. I'm here this evening to introduce the board's recommendation for a lien reduction on the property located at 311 Live Oak Avenue with a lien amount of $7,200. The city versus FLC Homes Incorporated in case number 183399. This case originated in August of 2018. The lien reduction request was presented to the board at the August 12th, 2019 board meeting by Director Barone. At the time the property came into compliance, a fine amount had accrued to the amount of $7,200. After hearing from Director Barone, the petitioner, Mr. Cacu, and board discussion, the recommendation as presented to the board by Director Barone was to reduce the lien from $7,200 to $900. By motion of a 6-0 vote, the recommendation to the council is for a lien to be reduced to $900 with a stipulation that the reduced lien amount be paid in full within 30 days of the city council approval, or the lien amount will revert back to the $7,200. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I don't believe the petitioner is here this evening. He is not.
Very good. I'd ask, Mr. Barone, do you have anything to add? Are there any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, I'd ask counsel if there are any questions. If counsel determines the lien reduction is appropriate, we'd call for a motion to approve a lien reduction in case number 18-3399, city versus Welfare Gold Bank and a trustee for the property located at 311 Live Oak Avenue. Is there a motion?
As I move that we accept the recommendation of the code board in case number 18-3399 to reduce the lien from $7,200 to $900 contingent upon payment being made within 30 days of this meeting or the fine reverts back to the original amount.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
There are three items on this evening's consent agenda. City Manager Stevenson will explain.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council, we have three items on consent this evening. Item 7A is a resolution approving purchase of a replacement vehicle for the engineering department fiscal year 1819 in our approved budget. Currently has $35,000 in funding for this scheduled purchase. The purchase will replace a 2005 Chevrolet truck that we currently have in our fleet. City staff has looked at the most efficient method to purchase this vehicle and has made a recommendation we do that from Duval Ford through the Florida Sheriff's Association contract bid award, FSA 18-VEH 16.0, specification number 61. Budgeted funds for the expenditure of $25,586 have been allocated in account 001-715-514.64-12 for the purchase of this Ford F-250. Item 7B is a resolution approving the purchase of three replacement vehicles, excuse me, for our sewer division within the Public Works Department. The current budget has allocated $200,000 in funding for these purchases. The requested trucks will be replacements for 2006 and a 2007 Ford F-150 and a 2000 Ford Purchases shall be accomplished through Duval Ford under the Florida Sheriff's Association bid award, FSH, FSA 18-VEH 16.0, specification 61, and specification 10C. Budgeted funds for this expenditure of $168,059 have been allocated in account 410-931-535.64-12. The third and last item on consent is another resolution approving the purchase of two pickup trucks for the water division. The current budget of 1819 has $70,000 in funding for these purchases. One of the requested trucks is a replacement for a 2008 Ford Ranger. The other will be a new addition to the fleet for the division. Staff has made a recommendation to purchase these again through Duval Ford through the Florida Sheriff's Association contract bid award, FSA 18-VEH 16.0, specification 55 and specification 62 that describe a Ford, one Ford F-150 and a Ford F-250. Budgeted funds for this expenditure amount to $52,861 and have been allocated in account All replacement vehicles will either be repurposed or sold through the auction at highest bidder. Staff recommends approval of the consent.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Are there any persons of the public that would like to address counsel on this item? If the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a, we have a motion in a second. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Consent agenda stands approved. Next, a resolution approving the annual renewal of the Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement. Police Chief Ken Albano will explain. Chief?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Ken Albano, your police chief. Before you this evening for your consideration and approval is the annual renewal of our Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement with Communications International. Communications International has served as our public safety radio maintenance and support provider since 2013 when council approved the proposed Public Safety Radio Conversion Project, which effectively placed all public safety radio communications onto the county sheriff's office radio system. At that time, council also authorized the use of Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office RFP 26-10 for the purpose of implementation, phase build-out, and ongoing maintenance for the newly acquired equipment. The aforementioned sheriff's office RFP was renewed on December 7th, 2018 and is currently in effect. The proposed renewal of our radio maintenance agreement with Communications International is in keeping with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned sheriff's office RFP. The annual renewal cost for the 12-month term beginning October 1st, 2019 is $59,697. Funding for this proposed expense is included in the fiscal year 2020 annual budget. If approved, payment in the amount of $59,697 will be made from the police department's fiscal year 2020 radio maintenance account 001-1411-521.46-15. Staff recommends approval and I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Chief. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel, do you have any questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the annual renewal of the Public Safety Radio Maintenance Agreement. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the resolution as described.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to council business, the first item under council business is the rescheduling of the public hearings for adoption of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 millage rate and budget. City Attorney Pam Shashawn will explain.
Counsel, as you know, we had rescheduled our regular meeting that was to be held last. We rescheduled it to tonight for purposes of impending hurricane. Our budget and millage was scheduled to be heard as a first reading at the meeting. However, the Department of Revenue had issued an emergency order that was provided to us this past Tuesday. And yesterday afternoon, we received a clarification of that order from Wyatt Peters, who is the tax loss specialist with the Florida Department of Revenue. The emergency order had given waivers and an extension of time to reschedule a canceled millage hearing. But the grace period ends September 19th, and according to Mr. Peters, the waiver was only for the tentative hearing. What provided some, what was causing the difficulty was is that the Department of Revenue's order made it fairly clear that we still had to comply with all of the statutory publication requirements for public notice. And because the newspaper requires us to submit our ads 10 days in advance, we were caught between a rock and a hard place there. We had been led to believe prior to the Department of Revenue order coming out and prior to us having the hearing, rescheduling our meetings, that we would be able to provide public notice simply by posting on our front door and by posting on our website. That did not seem to be the case under the Department of Revenue's order. And our charter, as you know, does require that our budget be adopted by ordinance. It had been proposed last year that that be amended to occur by resolution, which does not require an extra 10-day in advance publication that we are having to comply with here with regard to the ordinance for our budget. So just throwing that out there because that's something to think about again in the future about amending that portion of our charter. In addition, the Florida statutes provide a 101-day timeline, beginning with July 1, that we must provide a resolution or ordinance adopting the final millage rate to the property appraiser. Mr. Wyatt made it clear that that 101-day time limit has not been waived. But we have calculated that we can still meet that deadline by holding the final reading at our regular council meeting on October the 1st. So our charter does require that we adopt our new budget prior to the end of the fiscal year, and it establishes consequences if we do not. However, after having discussion with our finance director, it's been determined that any negative impact would be very minimal, especially since we are only going one day past the end of the fiscal year. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and instead of having our final reading on the 17th, that since we are having our regular meeting on the 17th, that that be our first reading and our tentative consideration of our budget and millage. And that we have the final reading and hopefully adoption at our regular meeting on October
Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Counsel, are there any questions?
Sounds clear to me.
I do have a question. So I'd always thought that we had to adopt the budget before the end of the fiscal year. It's okay that we adopt it on the first day of the next fiscal year? That's permissible?
Yes. We have enough time according to the state in order to do that because the 101-day requirement that we get this to the property appraiser, I believe when you calculate it, doesn't run out till somewhere between the 3rd and the 9th. So we do have time to get that in. It's our own charter that requires us to adopt our budget before the end of the fiscal year. And as I said, it does have provisions as to what happens if you don't. But since we are only going one day past, any, if there are any negative consequences at all, they are so minimal. And I told Lynn, we went, we met with Lynn and the city manager this morning about this and considered this, and it seems that one day is not going to have a big impact on us at all.
Thank you.
Councilman Schisler.
You open the door. What kind of negative impact would there be?
There is no negative impact. Actually, our charter, our charter actually says that if we don't adopt a budget by the end of the year, that we still have a source of funds with the current budget that we have now. We just, we just keep operating.
We're talking about 24 hours.
We could, we could suspend purchasing in 24 hours. We could last one day without having any impact whatsoever. We don't anticipate it.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the rescheduling of the public hearings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? I will share that in daily conference calls with mayors and the governor's office, I specifically asked this question. I was assured by the governor's office that per the emergency order that was filed, there will be, and there has been a grace period extended to every single city across the state of Florida. I was questioned on that when I called and shared that with the City of Temple Terrace. I have had subsequent conversations with the governor's office, with the lieutenant governor directly, and with the Florida League of Cities. That assures us there is a grace period that has been extended due to the storm and we will have no negative ramifications. If there is no further discussion, all in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the nay sign? Thank you. Motion carries. Is there any other new business or any other old business to come before counsel?
Yeah, I do. I'm sort of sitting on the fence. This is unfinished business, but perhaps would be new business. So I think it fits perfectly right in between so we can decide which category you want to put this in. I realize that we had much discussion the last two meetings, and these all revolved around the, how we were handling the five cent fuel tax. So forgive me, there are a lot of facts here and I, so I may tend to read a lot of this. So just bear with me. On August 20th, our city manager provided the council a stack of papers consisting-
Point of order, Ms. Donahue, is this, is this going back to a vote that was taken?
No. No. Has nothing to do with the motion that was made.
Okay. We'll entertain a bit of discussion, but if there's not a motion, we'll have to move forward.
There will be a motion. Thank you. Mr. Stevenson provided us a stack of papers consisting of every email and all the attachments concerning the discussion on the five cent fuel tax, including an agenda item from Plant City, which seven pages back to back, a draft of the inter-local agreement, backup explanation that had been prepared for the August 6th meeting, B O C C discussion, F.D. Florida Transportation Tax Sources Primer, which was 42 pages. So we had 59 sheets of paper back to back, plus copies of all emails as his defense that his comments at the August 6th meeting were accurate. So in looking at the materials that were provided to us and going through, and I won't be reading all of these, I just want you to hear that on all of these dates, the city manager was fully aware and had been aware and was either in discussion or in email about this fuel tax that was supposed to be coming towards us. And those dates start on July 17th. There are two on the 17th. There's one on the 20th. Special notation, the week in review, which is presented and sent to all our citizens, came out covering August, July 8th through 22nd. And that indicated that this was a tentative agenda item for August 6th. Then the 26th, there were two, and even in that one, the city manager noted that he had, he was informed that the Plant City Commission was informed of this. And so there's a lot of discussion between our city manager and others. On the 30th, on the 31st, on August 1st, several, on August 2nd, several, August 5th, and then on August 6th. So the reason I mention all of those, and I also want to say that on August 20th, the minutes reflect that at the August 6th meeting during the council meeting, that city manager said that he did have a chance to discuss this with Administrator Mike Merrill last Friday, and that he had tried to explain why the city wasn't notified beforehand. It was sort of dropped on the city last week and the city manager was concerned. And he obviously goes on, and I don't want to read everything, but he goes on to indicate that, that this was, that we had, we were upset by not being told. There was much other discussion. So I wanted to get these things looked at, okay? Because there's a perspective here- Because there's a perspective here, and these pertinent facts don't, they don't really match up. Our own, his own annotated version of what happened leading up to the evening of August 6th clearly outlines that Mr. Stevenson knew about this interlocal agreement starting as early as July 17, which was 20 days before the August 6th meeting. So there's no surprise here, okay? We had plenty of time for us to be apprised of what was coming. His remarks on the August 6th meeting are not backed up by his own defense, unfortunately, because even though this, and this is the stack of paper, even though it's, you know, it looks like a bold statement, look at all this proof, it actually proves that he did in fact act with dishonesty in, because you can't prove that you didn't do something when obviously the facts indicate that you were, you did know and what have you. He's mentioned 14 times in all of those emails as being involved directly in communication concerning the interlocal agreement. Now, he has hinted that he was not the only person who knew about this, and that may be the case. However, we all know, if you want something on the agenda, it has to go before the city manager. If you want something in a public information piece, it has to go before the city manager. Novus Agenda, Week in Review, I mean, we can go over a lot of different things. And after the comments that were made by nearly every council member, including the mayor, Mr. Stevenson responded to our concerns that this was, you know, something that had been pretty much dumped on him recently, and listing specifically that he really didn't know anything except the Wednesday and the Friday prior six days. However, public records show that it was a full 20 days showing in, in our public records. So I know that Mr. Stevenson runs a tight ship. All of these employees know that Mr. Stevenson runs a tight ship, and he has disciplined employees, as he should, for a variety of reasons based on our own city's rules and regulations of employee conduct. Now, considering that what we have before us tonight is a clear violation of what all of us expect our employees, our and our, to be honest at all times. We obviously have a list, a long list of other things. You know, I mean, it's amazing when you look at the rules and regulations, how defined our rules and regulations are, but honesty is always at the forefront. And so therefore sadly, I move tonight to, to suspend Mr. Stevenson for three days without pay, beginning Monday, September 9. Now, Mr. Stevenson can designate a interim city manager, which is the customary manner to handle that absentee, but I really feel that, that is my motion.
Before we discuss further, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, we will call the vote. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign? Motion fails. Thank you. On new business, is there any new business to come before counsel? Councilman Schisler.
Yes, well, new business board, board reports?
Sure.
Okay, very good. Back in June, I guess it was May or June, I was appointed to the Golf and Country Club SAC. So, we did meet in July, and I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what it was because things may be starting to move on the issue at bay. We all know that they have an issue with the irrigation system, okay? So, it's getting to the point where they need to do something about it, but I would like for counsel to invite the club to come to our next meeting on the 17th and explain what the issue, what the issue is. It's, it's, I don't feel that it's something that the SAC group should do, the SAC committee, but it is something that needs to be brought forth. Everybody needs to understand in open session what's going on with the thing, so that counsel can act on it accordingly as, as to what they want to do and how they want to help the club with, with, if they want to help the club with this issue. But I would like to recommend that the council formally invite this club to the council meeting for the 17th, so that they can bring it up and we can talk about it, and make sure everybody's on the same page as to what's happening, what they need. I'm not endorsing it in this, at this step, um, nobody's endorsed anything at this step, but I think it's time for everybody to get on the same page with, with this issue.
Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Would you like to make a motion to that order that we have that added to the agenda for the 17th?
I would like to move, move to invite the, the club to the, to the next, to the meeting on the 17th. Thank you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign? Thank you, Councilman Schisler. Is there any other new business to come before counsel? Seeing none, we will go to the city manager's report. City Manager Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have continually been trying to keep up with the transportation surtax and all the happenings with that. Way before last, Mr. Tinch, who has now assumed the role of staff liaison to this group, was able to attend a meeting and I kind of, their initial kickoff formal meeting, if you would. If I can, I'd like to ask him to come up, kind of give just counsel just a brief of, of the happenings of that, and certainly we have some things between now and September or October 1 that we need to get together, and he'll explain.
I'll give you guys a few minutes to distribute the packet of information. I will say that you can imagine my excitement when I heard that I was going to the IOC meeting. I dreamed of frolicking in the sand and, and the lake there in Switzerland and enjoying myself at the headquarters of the IOC, but only to find out that it was located in Hillsborough County. It's in a little different, not the International Olympic Committee, but the Independent Oversight Committee. So, point that maybe we should discuss later.
I probably should have told you that.
Yeah, I, he neglected to say that. Nonetheless, I did attend the inaugural, if you will, IOC meeting. It was on August 27th. During that meeting, they, all the, the council members showed up, the committee members, and in general, they had an attorney from the Hillsborough County. He came forward. He went over all the, the rules and regulations that guide the IOC and what it is that they're here to do, what their role is in this whole process. He specifically brought out four areas. Again, if you'll take a look at the Independent Oversight Committee Members in Purpose sheet, the single sheet, basically ensuring that there's transportation or that there's transparency in the process, and that they conduct an annual audit of how those funds are being spent. The second was that they approve the agency project plans, and that's the, the spreadsheet that I provided to you that I'll go over in a little greater detail in just a moment. The, the third was that they prepare an annual report for the Hillsborough County City's Clerk's Office. And, and finally, the fourth was to review projects from citizens that may want to bring forward a, an idea or a project, and ensure that it goes to the correct municipality for evaluation. You know, basically, just in general, there was some discussion between the group. They had an opportunity to kind of go around the room, introduce each other. I will tell you that the board is full of a number of attorneys and high-ranking officials in the area, so it's, it's a very well-formed group, and I think we were in, on the right path. Towards the end of the, the meeting, they actually had a vote. They elected a chair and a vice chair. The chair that was elected is Sean Shaw. I believe most of you know, may know Mr. Shaw. He's a, is a very gregarious individual. Seems like he was a very strong individual for that position. I'm excited about working with him. He was appointed by the Heart Board of Directors. The vice chair was elected Chip Fletcher. He is with an appointee from Hillsborough County, B O C C. Both these individuals seem like they're very competent. They're, they're attorneys in the area, and I believe that Mr. Shaw is actually, was an ex-representative for this area. So, I think we're in good hands as far as that's concerned. Other than that, had an opportunity to meet several of the members of the committee, including Dan April, our appointee, Madam Mayor's appointee, so it seemed like a very nice individual, and again, looking forward to working with this group. During that meeting, they did bring up that they wanted to set another meeting as a continuation of, like a meeting greet as to what they're doing and how things are going to operate, how they're going to evaluate projects, and how they go about the certification process. They're not actually, it's not a vote of yes or no, it's just certifying that the projects that are proposed on our plan, which again, is this spreadsheet, that it is acceptable and it does follow the intent of the, of the surtax, of the language in the surtax. So, that said, if you'd like to take a quick look at the draft plan that I have provided to you, it's a spreadsheet. If you notice, I've divided all the projects into headers, roadway improvements, sidewalk improvements, pedestrian and path trail, bicycle enhancements, and then finally multimodal improvements. So, as a city, we sat down, we discussed with staff, some of the needs, some of the wants that we would like to see these dollars spent on. In addition, we did, I did attend a meeting with Councilwoman Donahue and took in some of the information that I was hearing from the, the local community, and we kind of tried to thread that into this. So what I wanted to do is get this to you as quickly as I could, because I will be bringing this forward as a resolution at the 17th, the meeting on the 17th, for your approval. Now, that said, that doesn't mean that this plan can't be added to. If at some point during the next calendar year, because this, this plan actually functions on a calendar year, even though we're providing it to the IOC on what we would consider a fiscal year, the plan actually goes into effect come January 1. So, if there's a, a project or something that one of the council members feels strongly about, or the mayor feels strongly about, that really wants to kind of bring this forward and have this put onto that list, it's a simple process. You provide it to the city manager, we'd evaluate it to staff, we would then take it to the IOC, they would then approve it in a 30-day window, then it would be added to the list. In addition, you may note that there's a number of projects on here, and I purposely kind of front-loaded that because, as you know, our allocation is somewhere between 22 and 1/2 and $3 million annually. The city managers and I have had discussions that we would kind of ease into the first year. I have had discussions with staff members that we are able to roll that money over, so kind of ease in, pick some projects that we can get our feet wet, if you will. We don't necessarily have to do all these, but what that does do is if there's something on here that, again, someone feels very strongly about, we can push that forward and, and start that process over the next calendar year. So there, there is, again, there's an opportunity if we want to add something. There's, there are a number of projects on this list that I would like you guys to start to work your way through over the next week or so, and please, by all means, if you have any questions or concerns, or you want some clarification on something, reach out to our city manager, providing with that information. I'd be happy, myself, to meet with you and, and, and talk through that, or any of the members of the staff. I'm sure any of the directors would be happy to do so. So, that said, again, that's, that was the reasoning behind me providing this to you. Apologize that it was such a short window, but we've all kind of been following the process, and we know that there's been some litigation that's taken place, and there were a lot of questions about, is this going to happen, is this not going to happen? What's it going to look like whenever it finally rolls out? So, when they more or less lined it up and say, okay, we're moving forward and this is the process, we did try and get on this as quickly as possible. And again, it's only going to give you a little over a week to evaluate this initial list, but one thing that I envision is, as we roll into the next calendar year and our fiscal cycles, we're moving through that, and you guys have your sessions, or you meet your goal-setting, that would be an ideal time to sit down as a group with staff and say, okay, here's what we're thinking. What are you guys thinking individually? What are you thinking? What do you see the community wanting? What are you hearing? So there's that opportunity then for next year to build an even stronger plan, and to roll that into that year, and we may have the funding to do quite a few projects at that time. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunity for us as we move forward with this. I'm very excited about this and the opportunity that it brings to the city and what we can do with these dollars. Some of these projects that may have seemed like dreams can now become a reality, and that in itself is amazing. And there's, there are some potential for us to even add staff. We need to have that verified, but I did speak again with Dr. Johnny Wong with the MPO, and he indicated that you can thread that into this, and that will give you the opportunity to bring in staff for maintenance purposes, to, to help manage these projects. You're talking about multimillion-dollar projects, so these are big projects, take a lot of staff time. So, there could be an opportunity for us to also kind of dip into that a little bit, allow us to bring some additional folks on board, but that, that does need to be verified through the, the council. But that said, I know I've kind of provided you with a lot of information. I kidded with staff that this is going to be 45 minutes. I'm trying to keep it as quickly as possible. So if there are any questions, I'll, I'll certainly stand for them, and hopefully I can entrust them.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch, and the, the one caution that I would offer to counsel, and I know we're all aware, and I feel, thank you for your graciousness on if someone feels strongly, we can get it in. Just a word of caution to all of us as council members. We know we act as a body. If we feel strongly, we bring it to this body, and you have two other friends who say yes. We do not go directly to our directors. We do not go and lobby to our city manager. If you feel strongly about a project, it comes before this body. We act as one unified body, and that is just, just to avoid future challenges, future conflicts. Direction comes from the deus, not individuals. Councilman Schisler.
Yeah, good presentation.
No, thank you.
I've got a question for you. You said that we had to take it back for approval. Is that, is that a change as a result of the judge's order?
It's, it's actually not an approval. If I said that, that's a misnomer. I'm messed up on my mark.
Okay, all right, because you didn't have to have it approved before we just submitted to them.
We submit it to the IOC. The IOC then evaluates it and they certify it. They certify that it is meeting the intent of the surtax language.
They can't, they can't actually line item any, any, any items out.
They, I think they actually could. They could look at one of the projects and say, we really don't believe this meets the intent of the surtax. That is being struck from the, from your plan, and then we would move forward from there.
Okay.
Now, I, I did not touch on one point. If you've read the surtax language, there's a lot of information about, I believe there are five different areas that you have to specifically give percentages of your funding into. Because the City of Temple Terrace is leaving, receiving less than 5%, still being a fairly financial windfall for us, we don't have to go through the five steps. We don't have to allocate those funds in that manner. But what we do have to do is we still have to get our plan certified, and that plan to be certified has to be accepted by our governing council, so that's why I'm bringing it forward on the 17th.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there other questions? Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Troy. Appreciate this, and I'm trying to listen to you and read this at the same time, which is a little tricky, but-
Absolutely.
My question is, and I assume they'll know the answer to this, but I just want to have a little dialogue. Some of these projects are deeply embedded inside of our city limits, and they're just kind of pertaining to Temple Terrace, so-
Yes.
They're, really don't affect anybody else. But some of them are along our periphery.
That's correct.
And so, what kind of discussions are we engaged in, or will we? It's a little early, but with, for instance, Tampa, Hillsborough, so that we can leverage these dollars and say, okay, for instance, like a trail, it, it might start in Hillsborough, go through Temple Terrace, and go, and then go through Tampa. Are we gonna make that part of this process to say, hey, guys, we'd like to propose this, but having just a trail in Temple, that goes from our city limit here to a city limit here doesn't make any sense?
No, no, absolutely not.
We need to, you know, make sure that they're, we're all working regionally if we can. I know that's a kind of a dream sometimes, but you, you get my point.
Absolutely. What I would envision, Councilman Ross, is that we would meet as a group, and meet with the City of Tampa, meet with Hillsborough County, and have discussions about, here's what we're looking to do regionally. These are some of the- These are some of the regional projects. This is what we can offer. In addition, we would meet with the state if there were projects that we wanted to incorporate, our state roads, 56th Street, Fowler Avenue, that we would meet with them and sit down and say, this is a project we feel strongly about. Is there an opportunity for additional funding from the state, or do we feel like we feel strongly that, so strongly about this project, we're to carry it forward under our own umbrella, if you will? So, it's, but of course, they're going to have to all work together, and they're going to have to agree. So, I believe we will have many discussions and meetings about some of these more regional type projects and regional impact projects.
And one, one thing that strikes me, and some of these kind of touch on this, but I would just encourage you to keep in the back of your mind as you're thinking of these things, when we envisioned our downtown concept many years ago, and as we've worked to try to instill this, and we have stuff coming, one of the things that we've wanted all, all along to do is kind of reinforce that connection between us and USF. We have a lot of USF employees that work, that live here. If we can encourage or look for ways to make that trip easy, because it's only a mile and a half from Bush and 56, but at rush hour, it's a 45-minute drive.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I agree. Again, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying. I think there's a great opportunity for us to partner with USF in this, and now that we have some, some dollars to leverage, I think there's a greater opportunity for some of those to actually see the light of day.
Thank you.
Did they specifically address things that are not, I hate to say brick and mortar, but, you know, asphalt? You know, like an education piece on bike safety, an event where you, you know, teach people about bike safety or different transportation issues? Are those things in the gray area that we can do? And then, you know?
So, I think the, the committee is still kind of working through this. They're, they're going to have a lot of growing paints, if you will, since this is all new. But there are dollars, the dollars can be spent for studies, they can be spent for design, they can be spent for obviously construction. So, there's, there are other areas outside of just shovel-ready. We need to go out and put asphalt down or concrete down and start building something. So, I think there's probably going to ultimately be some opportunities for things that, as you indicated, you know, that would benefit the community and benefit us from the transportation aspect or multimodal aspect that aren't necessarily spelled out. A lot of the language, if you've read through the surtax, is open-ended. There's not a lot of defined information. As a matter of fact, when they talk about, does it meet the intent of the surtax? That's all it says. It doesn't give language about this is the intent. It does not spell it out.
Yeah.
And I think they maybe somewhat purposely left that open, but I also think we'll probably eventually start to see that narrowed down a little bit, defined a little better. So, but yes, I think there are, will be opportunities for that type of activity.
Good. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
City Manager Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the request of council, at our last regular meeting, there was a request that we start giving you updates on redevelopment at every one of our meetings, so I'll ask Mr. Pauli to come up and kind of just give us a brief between what's happened now. We gave you a, an update in last council's minutes of last Friday, but there's some stuff that has happened since then. So, just give us a brief update, Mr. Pauli, if you would, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. You'll notice that the format I left on the dais for you this evening is a slightly different format than the previous reports. I hope you find it easier to read. I've tried to organize it in a little cleaner format, and most importantly, it's ADA compliant as the other one was not. So, just real quick, you'll see over on the left, items that are new for the week ending, and the week ending date appears at the top. It says actually today. Items that are new for the given week are going to be indicated on the left and also bolded in the text. The first one there to mention is our city planner, Celeste Lau, engaged, the engineer from the Paragon Project to discuss more comprehensive sidewalk planning on their overall site. And moving on into the Richmond Project, Community Development Director Amir Anisey reported several items here. You'll see that he's completed his review on the building plan for the residential He also had a conference call with the developer's team to go over some of the questions involved. He routed, subsequently routed that information to the city manager's office, and Fire Chief Ian Kemp on that same project reported that his department had completed their review for fire suppression and auxiliary power requirements. Moving on into the Matera Project, towards the end there, it's actually page two. You'll see Ms. Shoshon, the city attorney, reported on the contract. She completed the edits and emailed a draft copy of the purchase and sale agreement to the developer, and also she followed up more recently, confirming that the developer did receive the contract, and the contract was routed to the developer's legal counsel for review. Obviously, after I finished, Ms. Shoshon can speak on that far better than I can. Under the Enigma North Project, nothing new to report for the current week. Under the Enigma South Project, again, Ms. Shoshon reported edits, modifications were completed on the purchase and sale agreement, and it was routed to the developer. Yesterday, I was contacted by the developer. He had to make an unscheduled trip out of the country for a health concern of a family member, so he was not able to do much with that draft upon receipt. This is Mr. Singh. Yeah, I think all of you have met him and know of him. He did reaffirm that he copied his attorney on it and that he would get back to us as soon as the health concerns overseas were resolved. And then, no changes on the O'Reilly updates and no other, nothing else to add under the general updates. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could add something to Mr. Pauli's report, I don't know if you guys know this, but the Enigma North is the old Just Breaks building. They've actually started gutting that building on the inside. I don't know if you guys are aware of that, but they're, they've gotten permission from the building department to do demo work on the inside and to move forward with replacing the roof, which is in pretty bad shape. So, they have started. We don't have any building plans in, as of yet, but they are cleaning the property up. So, we're excited about that. As I made council aware, we had a couple of our firefighters volunteer to go out of town to respond to some of the needs that possibly Hurricane Dorian brought us. They are in fact back in town. They were routed pretty much all over the southeast coast for a while, and I think they're glad to be back, but certainly, we appreciate their, their volunteering to do something like that and to be away from their families, certainly. We're, we're proud of the firefighters, and we appreciate it. If, Ian, you would extend that, that thank you to them from me, I'd appreciate it. The emergency declaration that we did last Friday expires, expired at 5:00. Obviously, we see no need to extend that, so that is in fact expired. October 1 is National Night Out. We're looking to, again, keep that agenda light. If there's any requests to put items on the agenda, if we can move it to the second meeting in October, I would appreciate that so that we can get out of here as early as possible on the first. I do have to tell you that I'm real proud that we have once again gone through an exercise of preparing for a storm come last week. It was pretty clear that we may get some pretty bad weather coming up the middle of the state. Fortunately, it turned, but I can tell you that your directors and certainly your staff that are out there in the streets every single day were very prepared, more so than I ever expected them to be. And again, my thanks goes out to everybody that's out there on the streets. Finance Department was ready, and Public Works was ready, and Fire Department and Police Department, Recreation and Public Works, every, my PIO people, they make it, they make it real easy to, to run down the checklist. So, a good group of guys. Appreciate it. Thank you. I extend a thank you to all your department personnel, please. I know Ms. Shoshon has got an update that she wants, you want to jump in and give them an update on Big Night?
Because we had gone ahead and vacated that right-of-way that's, that runs behind the Shell Station on 56th, the plaintiff in that case has gone ahead and done what they're supposed to do. They recorded our ordinance, which is what is required and paid for that, and their attorney filed a notice of voluntary dismissal with prejudice, which means they can't refile for any reason, and I did not have to go to a hearing in front of the judge today and explain why we're not done yet. So, I was glad about that, because the judge had been, we kept going back and going back saying, we're working on it, we're working on it, and I didn't want to have to face her today and say, we're not done yet, so we didn't have to go, and it's done. So...
And I just, I need the council to know, that, that is a longstanding lawsuit that's been in the books for guys going back to Tozer days, which is a long time. So, we're glad that is off the books. That's one less we have to worry about. I will ask council, again, to be, to be out of the office for the first part of next week. In my absence, Ken Albano has agreed to take over as the city manager for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and I'm in town. If you need me, if something happens, please do. In the meantime, we've given you that list of projects for the surtax. Again, it is subject to a lot of change. We really have, this is, this is, this is a new venture for everybody. We're going to play it by ear, but we're going to certainly try to spend this money wisely and get, get some projects done that really make an impact to this community. That being said, if you would review that, and if you've got some projects that have been on your, your horizon, please feed that back to us. Again, we can attach that list as a, as an exhibit to the resolution, and again, it's subject to change. So, with that, I don't have anything else, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City Manager Stevenson, Councilman Schisler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Stevenson, two, two items I want to, looks positive that you guys finally have a PSA agreement that you're looking at, and I'm hoping that by the next meeting, that will be inked. That would be something to look forward to from Matera Group. What is the status of the Richmond Project? When do we schedule the close on that? Because I know when we're here, when we approved their site plan, we, I asked the question, when are we closing? And nobody knew, and the developer representative got up and said, it's only 30 days after approval of tonight's agreement. It's been well after 30 days, so where are we at with the closing of the apartment project now?
Seventeenth. Seventeenth is closing day.
September.
September 17th.
September.
It's good news.
Put it on record.
Yeah, it's good news.
Like deadlines. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, super. Thank you.
That's the answer you want?
And I'd just like to echo City Manager Stevenson's comments on, thank you, Chief Kemp, for how you led us through from the initial Hillsborough County meeting with the EOC. Thank you, City Manager Stevenson, for being there, Chief Kemp for being there, and just throughout the process, nothing but, nothing but positive comments on how Temple Terrace was mobilized and ready to deal with this emergency. If there's no further business to come before council, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you. I'll have a light...